10th, 2017, at 4:30 PM. This is a work session, so we will not be having a public conversation today unless you're on the agenda. So, we do appreciate your cooperation and your placidity. We're gonna move right down the hill. Number two, we have a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, City of Burlington, Iowa. With conditions, Mr. Tisner?
This is property located at the corner of Columbia Street and Eighth Street, here in Heritage Hill Historic District. It's property we acquired through the abandoned building program. We've had a few interested parties in it that are wanting to bid on the property or acquire the property to rehab. It does need quite a bit of work. I guess one note from this property from others is being in the local historic district, any exterior changes that are made would have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission. That's just for changes made. If you're just doing repair or maintenance to the existing building, then you would not require any approval, and any interior changes does not require any approval. It's just if you're wanting to put on vinyl siding, that's probably not gonna be approved or doing something like that. So, it's intended to maintain the historic character in that neighborhood. Otherwise, it meets, requires all the same requirements as other properties for licensed plumery electrician, fixing it up, cleaning it out, and occupying. This was posted on our city Facebook page. It's been viewed over 70,000 times, I think one of our largest views ever on Facebook. So, word has gotten out quite a bit on it. A lot of just general interest being a historic property, and so hopefully we'll get some people interested in it. It does need quite a bit of work, been in it. Would not expect a high value from it, but someone that's really interested and has the means to fix up a property and maintain it.
That could really be a nice place, I think it looks to me like.
Anybody else have any concerns? Okay. Number three, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Oak Street Rightofway, located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa. It's gonna be first reading on that. Mr. Tisner?
This is something we've been working along with Public Works on for a while. Oak Street, east of Bluff Road, primarily serves the, I think there's a couple different names to it, but Burlington Truck and Rail, Inc., own property adjacent to it. They approached the city a while ago about vacating the street. They're going through some track improvements, and this track crossing is very difficult based on the grade and area there, and they have a separate access just to the north, adjacent to 922 Bluff Road there, that they'd like to use. The one concern is maintaining access to Burlington Waterworks, which owns, has to have access to their property back here along the levee. So, the Burlington Truck Rail has discussed maintaining an easement area to provide access with the existing entrance off of Bluff Road there, in lieu of the Oak Street crossing. This also affects our trail design along Bluff Road. Currently, it's dead-ending approximately in the area of this driveway access from Oak Street, so that would affect how that design and construction occurs, if this is vacated or not. I don't know if Nick has any additional information. He's been working with them on the agreements as well.
You will see it come for you next week, an agreement with the Burlington Short Line Railroad. Access agreements that will be spelled out for what you see in the black. It'll be clarified easement space for access for the, for Waterworks to use. And I've spoken with Shane, actually Eric and I both met on-site to go over the easement area that would be provided and maintained, and he's satisfied with that answer. I didn't know that the extent of the Oak Street vacation was as far to the east as that. Maybe we should clarify that prior to next week. But, other than that, I, you know, we're fine with it. Shane has been abrupt with the situation, so.
Shane's pretty cool, is that what you were gonna say?
I, well.
You can say it, go ahead, Nick. Let it out, man.
Shane's pretty cool.
Appreciate that. You guys good?
What's the deal with the trail and how you're, Eric question?
Well, right now, the construction is occurring on Bluff Road behind the barrier wall. The barrier wall ends approximately right here, and how it crosses this driveway is affected as if this driveway's taken out, there'd be different work done than if this driveway remains as far as the cross slopes and.
Boy, it's still planned to go there.
It's still planned to go there, but just how it's constructed differs if that driveway remains or if it's taken out.
Okay. Thank you.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. Number four, consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with John and Doris Champagne for encroachment into City Rightofway adjacent to the property located at 1500 Madison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisner?
John and Doris Champagne have applied for an encroachment permit somewhat after the fact. Didn't realize that their, they didn't realize that the retaining wall was on City Rightofway. This is a larger city right-of-way in this area where it's a few feet back from the sidewalk. They were working on a retaining wall in this area that became somewhat large and taller than expected, had some concerns about blocking the view at the intersection. Staff had, Public Works staff met out there with them, and they are lowering the retaining wall at the intersection there to three feet, maintaining on acres a little taller portion, but this would grant them approval to do so. If they don't get approval, they'd have to move it back a number of feet further into the, their grassed area there.
You guys got any problems with that?
I don't.
I don't.
Good. Number five, consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. Jesse?
So, basically, the issue with this project, the reason it came about is we did some sewer separation in that area, and we have, as you can see by the picture there, an issue in high rainwater events where the storm water overwhelms the two structures at the end of Harrison. It blows the manhole lids off, and it is a pretty violent event. But, we've basically designed another outlet. V and K has actually done the design on this one. There's another outlet there where we're taking the water and just basically diverting it into a pre-existing drainage way over the bluff. And down under the tracks, there is a five-by-five culvert that the water will go through and into the Mississippi. So, this will only happen, well, I guess this will take all the storm water that way rather than through those structures that you see on the left. Next.
Did that happen this morning?
Not that I'm aware of. At least I wasn't called if it did. I would think, they're usually pretty good about telling us when that one happens. But, engineer's estimate is slightly higher than the 2016 miscellaneous sewer funds that it was attributed to. There's a very good likelihood that the bids will come in under the engineer's estimate, so we'll, we'll deal with that when we get the bids in. Tentative schedule would be to bid in mid-August, start construction in late September, and then be done in December. Questions on this one?
We're good?
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I got one more.
Number six, consideration of the plans and specs for the 2017 flow metering project. Jesse?
All right. Flow meeting, basically, we are looking at procuring 10 non-contact flow meters. You can kinda see a schematic of what that looks like in the bottom right-hand corner. Basically, they shoot a radar-type system down into the flow line, so you don't have to have any contact to get flow parameters from the pipe. They're a lot cleaner than the other ones. They're a lot easier to maintain since there's no contact there. Currently, we have two or three submersibles that we have in our equalization tanks that we're required to have to watch overflows and things of that nature for the IDNR. But, these will be set up so we can monitor flow throughout town, figure out where our worst I and I portions are in the places that we've already done sewer separation, so we can more effectively plan where we're gonna maintain everything. By doing that, you know, it'll make it a lot easier to plan our maintenance from year to year and get a capital improvement plan together. We're really kinda doing this also in conjunction with the sewer master plan that's coming up, where we can plan, you know, where pipes need to be bigger, where we can add more capacity, you know, things of that nature. So, a lot of it will be really helpful for that sewer master plan, and what we're looking for here are four non-contact meters, or four contact meters and 10 of the non-contact. And these will be moving all over town.
All right, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah, chasing, chasing the worst parts where we have, you know, low, relatively low flow during normal, normal conditions and really high flow during wet weather conditions in places we're already supposed to be separated. So, I think that pretty much addresses what we're needing them for.
You're using that with MASL too, or no?
Yes. They will be used for pre- and post-separation in MASL to see, you know, what those flow characteristics look like in a pre-separation, post-separation environment, which we hope to have pretty good results in that since the plan for MASL is to put in new sanitary lines rather than new storm lines like we have in most of the other parts of town. It's a little bit more expensive option, but I think at the end of the day, you won't ever have to worry about that sewer line, or the sanitary line we're putting in.
Good?
Can discuss some of it?
Next slide. Next slide. Well, the engineer's estimate is roughly 150,000, and we're getting out of 2017 sewer funds, which the depot was all, on there also, the depot separation, and that was leaving about 225,000 in the 2017 miscellaneous sewer fund.
And this is all, this is all money used with the sewer separation? This is money that's going toward that as well?
This is outside of sewer separation.
It's helping to accomplish it, but it's, it's not gonna be, like, the first project is the Locust Basin?
Correct.
And that one will be on, when we do that construction project, that'll be on an SRF financing, so we'll be using, we'll be capitalizing and repaying the debt. This is something that we're just paying upfront as part of a process of trying to make sure that we can prepare not just for the MASL separation, but the system-wide stuff. It came up originally, I think, from the MASL, as we were talking about what we needed to do to measure flows, but it was also something that was part of doing, appropriately doing a sewer master plan, which is where I think you're looking at a larger number than what you would've otherwise done with just the MASL itself.
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, who makes these things, or where do you get them?
There are two different companies that we're looking at right now that are basically the two biggest companies in North America that do it. There's a few outliers beyond that, but the first one was Hawk, I believe, and the other one, GPM is our, the rep that we were going to, but I don't remember exactly what the brand is, but there's two different companies.
It's not important, I just was curious.
And they're a nationwide thing because it's pretty specialized equipment.
Yeah, I figured it must. Okay, thank you, Jess.
You guys good?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anna, you good?
Yes.
All right. Okay, number seven, motion for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street Rightofway located west of South Main Street. Mr. Tisner?
No changes from previous reading, again, vacating the portion from the dead end to the west with the 18-foot portion going to the property to the north, and the remaining portion going to the property to the south at 221 Denmark.
You guys good?
Yes.
I figured you would be. Number eight, motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 126 taxi cabs and vehicles for hire for the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting Chapter 127 Vehicle for Hires, Vehicles for Hire Drivers in its entirety. Do you have anything you wanna add to that, Chief?
I don't know, first.
Okay. Counsel, are we good on that?
Sure.
Somebody say something? Okay. Moving right along then to the proposed consent. Set date for public hearing, August 7th. Consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1309 South 10th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Let's discuss. Update for Tree Advisory Board.
Maybe you. I'm Scott Zeiser.
Hi, Scott.
Hello. We have formed the Tree Advisory Board last November, I believe, and what we do is we meet quarterly, and this is our annual meeting to talk to the council about what we've done and who we are and what we are all about. I'm the chair. Whitey Walker is the vice-chair, and Stacy Rector is secretary. We also have, in the room, I believe Lisa Lok is in here, and we have Dave Smizer, Joyce Tager, and Dave Hazel are also part of our group. And from the city is Patrick Moore and Ryan Gorley. So, we have a good mix of people on this committee. What we have done, and so far, we've met twice, and we've hosted a demonstration at the old Dresser Rand for a tree planting demonstration. We received a $5,000 donation from Case Company for trees, which was about a month ago, I believe. We've hosted a town hall for the Emerald Ash Bore, which is very invasive, and eventually we're gonna be, a lack of ash trees in our area. So, that's sad, but there's other trees that are gonna make their way into our city. We've also applied for a Trees Forever Branching Out Grant, which we will find out. I don't know the dates, but I think I'm gonna have Patrick speak a little bit about our zoning map we've re, we've done. We are celebrating the 30th year of the city of a tree, city USA representative, which I think should be, Burlington should be very proud of, and we will be hosting another tree planting this fall. So, also, the city has predominantly not a lot of diversity in trees, so what we're trying to do is no more than, 10%, of no more than one species, no more than 20% of one genus, and no more than 30% of one family. Lamest terms, we need to mix our trees up.
Right on.
We've had too many maples, we've had too many ash, and the city is finding out, it's a burden with the ash trees and the bore and everything else. So, it's very costly what's happening, but we diversify, I think we'll be in a better situation. Years ago, it was the Elm that created this, so. I'm gonna have Patrick talk. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm here to answer. All right?
Thank you, Scott.
Awesome.
I like Scott said, I'm Patrick Moore, city forester for Burlington. I can't say, I love, thank you for, for our board. They've been a great help for, for our park threat department. They bring a lot of different views and suggestions on what we should be doing as a city, and just new, fresh ideas. Like Scott said, we're very close to getting to our 10, 20, 30% goals. Right now, our biggest percentage is, is silver maple right now.
Yeah.
And then, after we get silver maple down, we should be able to hit that goal fairly easily. Scott mentioned also that we have a new zoning for forestry. Basically, we're going off of the sanitation's map, which was only five zones for the whole city, which is a little much to take, take into account when you have a storm incident, or just trying to do your regular maintenance and trying to figure out what, what areas you've hit and what areas you've missed. I broke that down into 24 zones now, so, and right now, we're starting a process of going through each zone and doing all our preventive maintenance of block pruning and removals and stump removals as well. We're about ready to finish up our first zone, which is from Arch Street to North Street and from Third to Central. And we're also using that zone for planting purposes as well. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Sounds like good work. I don't know if you have an answer for this, but I'm at the golf course quite a bit, and there seems like there's a lot of dead or dying trees out there. What's the plan for out there?
Out there, we're just trying to take care of this as a kind of need basis. We kind of find something that's dead, dying, obstructing a view. We usually try and take care of it in the winter out there, so we don't disrupt any, any season activity that they have.
Recently, what, the three big cottonwood trees have come down there?
Yep, yep. We had some issues with them, and, and we were lucky enough that we were able to get some of our contractors out there to take care of them immediately for us.
Sure changes that course.
Yep.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Someone once told me that my golf swing looks like I'm trying to chop down trees, so if you need some help, let me know.
So, are you putting a map up on, on the website that is breaking down your zones and kind of having some information on?
I think that's in the work, uh, let me hear a question.
We will be, yeah.
Okay. And what, how long, who are you, and how long you been with this city?
Who is this guy?
What?
Patrick Moore. I've only been here for about a year, actually just a year and a couple, just a couple days.
Lead forester?
Yep.
Everyone says you're, are you doing a good job, or, or what? Eric is, Brian, is he doing a good job? Actually, he's brought a great, he's brought a great attitude to the forestry department. We've been very pleased with, with what's gone on. Everything I hear has been good from Eric and Ryan, and gotten good feedback from the public where, where things have been responsive. I'm sure there's still spots where we're not always responsive, where people would like us to be, but things have been very good with, with him being in charge down there, so, thanks.
Hey, I wanna give out one to you too. I've heard good things about you, so people are talking about you, good stuff, so keep up the good work.
And here I was gonna ready to introduce you.
Wait, you wait till after the meeting, then.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Jess.
Are we good? And, man, good job to the, do you have all the names? Did you give us all the names of everybody on the, on the tree?
I did. I did. I can go over them again, but I can hand them, I can.
I just wanna make sure you tell everybody thank you for, everybody came together. That seemed like that just, they need to be done, and everybody came together real fast on that, so that's awesome deal, awesome deal. Are we good?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Number two, pool dome.
I'm gonna start just by going through some of the stuff, handed out a draft lease agreement. We've been having discussions with the group here on use of the pool during non-season for the city of Burlington. They've talked previously to the council about installing a dome over the pool. Finally, at a point where we have some actual language in a lease to discuss, and this is something we haven't, I guess, staff and the group haven't had a chance to discuss all of this yet. Had our attorney give some preliminary comments on as well, but I can run through just some of the general comments on it. Looking to lease the pool during the off-season of the city of Burlington, which is essentially one week following Labor Day through May 1st of the following year. During that off-season, they'd be allowed to put in dome over the pool for use in the They'd be permitted to make improvements to the pool house, pool and grounds prior to, subject to approval by the city in order to allow for the use of the pool and pool house during their lease period. Any improvements would not, should not interfere with the continued use of the premise by the city during non-lease periods. Discussed a payment, to the city of monthly payment of $2,500 due each month during their lease period. One component was their request for the first two years, reducing that to zero or a nominal sum in lieu of installing the pool deck, doing the pool deck improvements that is in our CIP in five years for 100,000. So, covering that cost upfront with the installation of the dome, realizing that money would come out of the CIP in five years, but having, realizing that cost by them through a reduced, or no lease payment for the first couple years, allowing them to do that replacement of the pool deck. They talked about having year-round swimming lessons operated by the, the group at the pool.
So, is that what item eight means? It just didn't make sense to me what you're saying. Have you guys looked at that?
On which one?
Item eight. Is that reading right, Eric? Is that?
I think it's been changed a little bit from how it originally read. Essentially, it's intended that the leasee would provide the swimming lessons year-round during season and during non-season.
Yeah. It is, it's not the way we originally had it, but it's, basically, we're saying we'll take over the swim lessons and provide the swim lessons.
Well, something needs to be cleaned up in that language, because it doesn't make sense the way.
Yeah. Change from our attorneys, we haven't had a chance to really review this or talk to our attorney on it a little bit, but.
What about the cost of heating, putting in a heating system?
Any cost associated with the dome is borne by the leasees. The, you know, there's some components to the dome, the heating in the air, in the airflow into the dome, that's all borne by the leasees. The heating cost to run the existing heater during the off-season would be their cost as well, utility costs would be their cost.
All utilities during our lease period will be our responsibility.
I assume, going back to swim lessons, I assume you have a fee structure, you're gonna be charging for that? Well, there's some other edit, edit changes that need to be moved up the scene, but.
Yeah, this is certainly just a draft that we got back this weekend.
Patrick gave it to us on Saturday, so we haven't reviewed it. I think we're still, well, Eric and I need to have a conference call even with him just to, even to get our comments to him on this, so, I mean, we're seeing it almost as fresh as. And this, this is the first time you've seen this?
Yeah, yeah. I got, I think, I got the email earlier today, so, but I didn't have a chance to look at it earlier today.
Yeah, well, we didn't either.
This is the first. But, basically, we're, we're looking to come in and lease it. The only reason we didn't go year-round over the nine-month was because it is a 40-year-old pool. Anything major that goes wrong with that pool, we were nervous to be on the hook for if it just goes and it's done. And if we're leasing it year-round, that's on us to replace a 40-year-old pool.
Rightfully so.
Right from the beginning. So, we like the nine-year lease, nine-month lease, whatever, and, and then everything stays the same over the summer with the exception of us taking over the swim lessons. So, it, long-term, it should be a save to the save. That's, that's what it should be.
Are you looking at doing this this year or next year?
Next year.
So, it would be a year out. If there was, there'd have to be some lang, there's no language in here if you were, I don't know if you're going after state funding to help pay for this. If there's any requirements for maintaining that facility for a period of time, how that gets handled for guaranteeing that potential liability, and maybe that isn't there.
I think it was in the original. Did it come out, or is it still?
There's some general.
Understanding is that.
It's still in there, okay.
Long-term issues.
Yeah, so we wanna make sure that that gets worded in a way that protects the city and that you guys are comfortable with too, but we need to understand where any liabilities are on that.
It, it would go both ways, 'cause we need protection. If the city says this isn't gonna work and we got the grant, then we need out, and you guys need this anything.
And speaking with the state, the only, I mean, it's, it doesn't have the same type of clawback provision that Division Iowa funds had, but it would be similar to, their comments to us was similar to what DOT is down at the depot. You look at a life cycle process and see how far into that life cycle you are on the grant, and if you were to terminate activities, you would, they would do some sort of a prorated, prorated calculation to say what a ballpark repayment requirement. Well, that certainly is better than what it used to be then. Right, Becky, you remember that? Well, there is, this isn't hard and fast the same way as what the, from, at least from, I, what I got from Charlie's comments with the state, but there would be some sort of a repayment clause if, say, five years down the road. Yeah. You're terminating it and it had a 15-year life cycle. So, the question that Mary is, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, when I was on the cat.
Can you become deeper? Um, can I become Jim?
I was, I was on that committee like, um, you were, Jim, and the only time I saw where they asked for money back was when it wasn't completed, as they said it should have been completed, and where they had given the money and then it wasn't completed. I don't remember there being a, I mean, it may be different on the Vision Iowa funding, but, um.
The state, when we emailed staff at the state level, they said if you, if it had, if they put a fifteen-year life cycle on it and you ended it after five years, there, there would be some level of prorata that they would ask for back.
And I could see that if it was a short period of time.
Yeah. I, it, it's not a hard and fast, I don't think, but the staff is going to be looking out for that. They don't build it into the contract the same way the Vision Iowa is, but it's still something that's there.
Yeah, I, I think that you could argue it.
Yeah, but that's still a liability that will sit out there for, that someone needs to be able to, to know that needs addressed.
I hope we can make this work. I think taking a city facility and putting it in use from three months to twelve would be great, you know. Now, granted, we have to get the details worked out, but the idea to me is very appealing. I don't know how to swim, but I know people that do, so.
I support that message, Bob.
All right, thank you.
And so, where do, where do you stand on grant application?
So, we're, we can't do the grant application until we finalize everything with the city, so we can't. Until we get this lease agreement taken care of, then we have to have fifty percent raised, and then we can do the grant.
The next, the next application date is October 1st and it goes, uh, January 1st, so we'd really like to make that October 1st that date in order to keep the flow going, so we can do construction in the spring, be prepared for the next fall.
Ideally, we'd like to start the, the deck work and all that in the spring and get all that done before the pool opens, and then all we have to do in the fall is put up the structure.
Right. That makes sense.
Yeah.
But are you still looking, then, for a contribution from the city in order to qualify for the grant?
Well, the question is whether this lease, the, the relief on the lease agreement, we've got a meeting tomorrow with Tracy Lamb, depends on who's got the real plan, but that is the question. We're assuming that this helps with that requirement, we've got to inform that with them.
Okay.
There's a couple of ways we're looking at it. We're looking at it for one, the, the lease agreement as one, and anything we can, we can throw on there.
Yeah.
As this is what the city's putting into it. There's a new pump coming that needs to do. That's something the city's putting into it. Will that count towards their percentage?
Okay. Cool.
I guess my only question is, just for plain and simple clarification, ongoing city costs, extra, are there any?
That's one of the concerns that we've had on what, what happens with maintenance costs, if this is going to have the potential to increase those maintenance costs, and what, and the, part of the reason to have a fee in there, uh, twenty-five-hundred a month for the first year or two, and then tw- two-fifty, uh, subject to whatever negotiations need to go on. But part of that is to try to recognize that we might have higher cost, uh, with that. That, there is another ongoing cost that goes with it. We still have to monitor, I think, I, I mean, again, I'd kind of read through this this morning, too. Um, we have the staff that are, is going to continue to monitor chemicals, and now instead of for three months, we have to do that over the course of the full year cycle. So, we have our own staff costs that are going to be higher as a result of this towards the pool. Um, my, my biggest concern is recognizing that if, if things, I understand that everything works great and everything's successful and we go through the full cycle and every, everybody's happy. Uh, if something doesn't work and it doesn't, and you, there isn't the ability to make it continue three years down the road, what's, what's your, the council's end game on this? Uh, do you have a mechanism to get, if there's any stranded costs that have to re, reimburse, who's going to do that and how are you covering it? Uh, what's your game plan for if the private group can't make it continue to happen? Are you going to continue to operate that now at a large, potentially a larger loss than what the existing pool is, and how are you going to fund it? And those are just some risks that, that sit out there. You don't, those are what-ifs that you don't know.
I guess, one thing, one thing that I do, I do see here is, we aren't looking to own the dome. We, I don't want the team to own the dome. One, the team is, we're a portion of a team from Cedar Rapids, so I don't want that team to own this dome. I want either the swim club, the Burlington Swim Club, or the city to ultimately have ownership of that dome. So, if we buy the dome and you guys have ownership of it when it's all said and done, it's, it's paid for and then you have an asset there that you can either use it or you don't use it. I don't see a long-term cost other than repaying the, whatever grant money might be in, so, um, and there is, I mean, we're looking at a hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Um, if we only use that for three years and they make you pay back half of that, yeah, we have seventy-five thousand, and we do have to figure that out. Other than that, I don't see a long-term cost. Um, we fold up in three years and you don't have anything with that, you guys got a brand-new pool deck. Hey, that's virtually, I mean.
That's, that's the easier part of it, but with any program that gets expanded, uh, that's, that's on city property, something like that, if, if the group that's running it isn't able to make it continue, it's a hard, it's a hard decision. It will be in the laps of the, whatever the council is that's here on, at that time, to make a decision. Are you going to make it continue to run? Is there going to be that built-in community expectation that it, it should be continuing to happen or not? And it's, it's not, it's not something that it's forcing the council to do, it's just, it will be one of those hard decisions that will sit out there if that were to occur.
I see what you're saying, yes.
That was one of my, you clarified my question, is who's going to own this thing and are you going to lease it or rent it or, or own it? And if it doesn't go, then, if the city owns it, we could potentially sell it. Is that correct? There should be another buyer out there?
And that, that is assuming. I think we're far enough along with this swim team now that even if the team from Cedar Rapids pulls out, the head people from Cedar Rapids pull out, we have other people interested in a team in Burlington. There's another team in Quincy that really wanted to move here, and we ended up choosing this other team instead. Um, but I think there's enough where, within a short period of time, we could have another team here and continue the process. Um, obviously, that's all based on they're making ends meet. I mean, no one wants to come in and, and lose a ton of money. Um, but that's, they've guaranteed us that they, and, to be honest, the team from Cedar Rapids said they would sign, if it took the fifteen-year agreement, they would sign a fifteen-year agreement saying they'll be here for fifteen years. So, they seem to not be nervous at all that they, that this is going to work, just, so, just going off of what they say.
I love your optimism. I really do.
Tell you what, somebody said they'd sign a fifteen-year agreement. I mean, I, that would make me feel pretty confident, but, um, yeah, we'll see, we'll see.
So, where do we go from here?
That's what my question was. What is, um, are we waiting, so we'll be waiting to get this back and then we bring it?
I think we need to talk to our attorney, and then if you have any additional comments on the language on this, get that to us so that we can.
I guess some of that's going to be based on what you guys change with them, too. I'll need another.
I think the biggest, bigger things for, with us talking is, is more grammatical, making sure it matches from that side, because he added some liability protections in here. You, I would assume your groups might have some, some bigger significant changes that you'd like to be proposing, too. I, I mean, I don't.
And it's not far from what, what they did. The, the changes, I did forward the changes on as soon as I got it today, waiting to hear back on that. Um, but it's, it's not far off. The insurance thing that was brought up, um, I need to find out the exact numbers that are covered, what that number is, but, um, it wouldn't be a whole lot different than when we're, we're using the high school pool now, and we had to provide proof of insurance there, too. So, um, I just have to make sure they meet those, those numbers, so.
Okay.
So, we still need, we still need to wait to see what the language is?
Yeah, we, there'll be some modifications yet to language, whether it's small or major, and it's not going to happen by next Monday.
So, we do, so we go through a work session one more time?
It'll, it'll.
Then we have a council meeting?
Yep.
It'll be an agenda item, not a discussion item.
Yeah.
At a work session and council meeting.
Thanks for all your work.
Thanks for your work, yes.
Hope this works.
I do, too.
Okay. Anybody have any parallel appointments?
Nope, I don't.
I don't.
Okay. Mr. Tissin? Antoinette?
Um, for future discussions, I'd kind of like to talk about, um, ordinances and requirements for rental properties, people who own them. I think it's about time we start going through what we said we were going to do, to go through ordinances. That was a goal, was it not? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I was writing that down.
Yeah, all right. Um, but then, over the weekend, I had so much fun, but I can hardly walk. My legs hurt.
That doesn't sound like fun to me.
I know. So, I helped clean out the typewriter shop with the downtown partnership. That was so much fun.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Up and down the stairs.
Yes, up and down the stairs, carrying heavy things.
Steph, that wasn't fun. That was so much fun, is what she said.
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, I was, I was really thankful that, uh, Steve sent that email out to us so I could, I knew about it. And then Saturday was a symphonic blast, and that was a blast.
That was great.
Perfect weather, full moon. Upcoming events, though, on the fourteenth, which is Thursday, we have, of course, the farmer's market.
Yes.
And sidewalk sales.
What sidewalk sales?
All the, downtown. You're just going to do all your shopping. You're going to get your clothes, your food.
Isn't that very vintage thing this weekend?
Yeah, yeah. You're going to get into that on Friday.
Okay.
Don't steal my thunder. On Friday, then, is, um, a very vintage market, and since it's the second year.
Saturday?
Where am I at then?
Sabado.
Saturday, the fifteenth, right?
Where am I at then? What's going on? Oh, I've got everything all mixed up. Hmm. Yeah, Saturday.
So, it's still going to be in the same place, though, right?
Same place, yeah.
Same stuff.
But it's going to be, I, I'm going to guess it's going to be huge.
I would imagine. It's going to be huge.
It's going to be huge.
Yes, huge.
Huge. That's it.
All right. Tim's got it.
I've got nothing.
Tim's got nothing? Okay. Um, I've got, uh, Jim's just getting back. Want to welcome you back to America. Um.
I haven't left America. I will later in a month.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm still speaking here, but anyways, uh, welcome back to America, Jim, and, uh, the Maple Street, uh, the Fourth of July deal on Maple Street, and I know Bob's going to say something, he was there as well, but I just have to say that the police department, the fire department, um, South Hill Neighborhood Association, um, uh, Fred Starling and his church, um, everybody that had something to do with it, Nathan Williams and Harmony Bible. I'm, I'm, I know I'm leaving somebody out, so I probably shouldn't have said any names, but just what a, what a fantastic event. It just made for a great day. It was a great capper, and somebody had brought up something to me about something that some, some other communities were doing, and I had to remind them to, they don't have to go outside of city limits, you know, that we're doing it right here in Burlington, and we're doing it right here in Burlington. So, what a fantastic day. I was just glad that I got a chance to be there and I got to eat some really good food. Um, the seasoning that the fire department had was fantastic, was phenomenal. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to say was, uh, our very own Jim Davidson is going to be celebrating his fiftieth anniversary. He's been married for fifty years, and I just.
Not quite.
Well, not quite, not quite, but when you get that close, we can go ahead and make the call, and, uh, I just want, I want to, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Jim and Sandy. Um, they're a wonderful, wonderful couple that, that live right here in the city of Burlington, and, uh, that's just something that, that needs to be, uh, recognized. You just don't see that as often anymore as we used to, so, uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, thank you. And I did get to enjoy the, the barbecue at the, at the Maple Hill, and I was not asked to evaluate which one was better, so I, I know that the chiefs were in friendly competition about that, and so I said to my wife, Sandy, I said, what should I say? Well, each of them had their good points.
She's a sweetheart.
Is that the politically correct way to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, kudos to you guys. It, it was good.
I had a good time there. I wasn't able to stay very long, but, uh, I did find out that the fire chief does know how to do chicken, in spite of what the police chief said.
He's still calling it mystery V.
Well, I took some time to study that. I mean, this wasn't done in a flippant manner, but I also got three or four tips on how to properly do the barbecue ribs because I just screwed some up at home a week ago. But anyway, again, I think it was a great thing what you people did. I think it's a positive thing for our community, and, again, I say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well said, well said, Bob. City manager? Mr. Man.
This is a map I did, so pardon the crudeness of it. I just wanted to bring to attention, uh, we had pre-construction for Agency Street last week. Um, on July twentieth, you'll start to see cones and delineators and barriers and the whatnot, um, headed out to Agency Street. So, what they're going to do is bring, um, westbound traffic into the southern lane, so you'll have one lane each way on the south side. So, as you can see, it drops it across through both the frontage road and the West Burlington Avenue intersection. I've talked to West Burlington. Um, once I have some better traffic control plans, um, I will forward them on to both West Burlington Agencies and then ours to let them know. Uh, we're also going to probably put some, some information that's, uh, a little bit more thorough than this on the website and Facebook, so just wanted to make you aware. And July twentieth is the date that they'll start. Putting some work out there, so.
And the season, the construction event will take how long?
Um, ninety days, if Jesse wants to correct me, he can, which puts us, puts us into mid-November.
Jesse did that.
So, we're, I'm a little nervous about that timeframe. You know, we were pretty lucky last year being able to do construction until almost Christmas. Um, so hopefully we're, we're lucky this year and get, at the very least, we want to make sure that we at least get the lane widening done. Um, so they're going to go in and widen the lanes first and then go and attack the intersections.
Cool.
After that. Um, so there will be a moment of time where West Burlington Avenue and Agency Intersection is down. Um, and I know that West Burlington has the mill and overlay project from West Burlington out to Gere. Um, I think they're going out to bid sometime soon, um, so we'll see how those two projects line up, but otherwise, we'll be putting stuff out on the web, so be looking for that.
You're going to talk about the roundabout while you're there?
Um, the roundabout, we had a little bit of a snafu last week. Um, they were boring for the lighting and they tagged a three-inch gas line. Um, so unfortunately, they had just poured fresh concrete over top of the area that they did it, and actually it created a pretty good crack in the concrete, so they had to tear that out and repour. Um, with the rain this morning, they didn't pour today, but I think they're expected to be done by the end of the week, Monday, Tuesday-ish at the latest, pouring concrete. Um, so there's still a lot of grading work and lighting work, um, and signage and painting and things of that nature that need to be done, but as far as pouring concrete, they should be done.
So, when do you think this will be completed?
Well, we've got a bet going on down at Public Works in the timeframe. We think it's probably sooner than the August tenth deadline. Um, uh.
Wow.
So, I would guess in the next three weeks, you should probably see something.
What's going in the middle? Is it going to be sotted in there?
It is, actually, I don't know those plants. There's nothing in there. I think it's just grass and seeded down.
We had thought about a statue of the mayor.
I object.
But you couldn't, you couldn't find anybody artistic enough to make it come out beautiful?
It's going to cause too many wrecks and three D.
I, I've seen typically in roundabouts where they have put something in there as kind of an object to prevent, so you can see it, so you don't drive straight through it, but, yeah, I don't, there's no plans right now to put anything in there. So.
Thanks.
I will, uh, hopefully it'll be done soon. I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, I gave you a copy of the letter from the Department of Cultural Affairs. Uh, they've not, we applied, or Charlie, I guess, did the application for the Great Places designation, um, and we were awarded Iowa Great Places, uh, designation. Uh, that'll, that's good for five years. Um, the main project area that we're looking at is for the riverfront. Um, it puts us in line to be eligible to receive, uh, project funding. Charlie thought in a fifty to a hundred to 100,000 range for whether that was a splash pad or a ban shell or some type of structure down in that area that fits within the overall long-term goal of the development of that area. It's something that we will be working on over the course of the next couple of years. And again, just another thing that springs off of the, what's going on with the riverfront improvements and the flood wall. We will be having come forward to you at some point here fairly soon to, you got another award? Charlie got another award from Iowa Boat Infra, or from the boat infrastructure? What's the?
What are you talking about?
I don't remember the.
I can't think of the fund. It's a boat infrastructure fund.
Do planning.
For planning, so it's $200,000 for design work for a dock, a new dock, and then it puts us in line then to, based off of the design that we come up with and the plans and specs, to then go to that same funding source to do the actual project over the course of the next few years. So we are seeing some nice things come forward off of that.
So what you're saying is that Charlie is earning his money?
Charlie's having to coordinate awful lot, and it's not just Charlie. This, these are all projects that several people in the planning department, several people in Public Works are having to work together with on this. We don't have anyone who's designated to do this kind of stuff, so it sort of fits in where people have time, and he's, he's probably the, the main person that does it, but Charlie is not an engineer, so that means that a lot of that part of it ends up falling on the engineering department, as they grimace in the back. No one has this as an assigned duty. What I like is that for the most part, people are willing, for the most part, people are willing to work, move forward and.
But yes.
I can't fault them.
Well, I mean, they, 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 they see the good that it does for the community as a whole.
God bless them.
So, and they're willing to do it, so. I'm very, I'm very happy for what they do, and I, good, good group. That's all I had.
Gosh, can we actually do this in the hour?
You going to do the radio on Wednesday?